Thank you.
I'll keep my finger on the button for you.
It's gonna be a wild and woolly morning. Donna, so glad to see you here. Would you like to lead us in the pledge, please? No? Well, you know, this proclamation, I might forget it. All right. Please stand if you can. "I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all." Thank you. Does the staff have any announcements to make? Okay. What? Oh, gee. Okay. Sorry. Go ahead. I'm still not used to this. Go ahead.
Item one: recognition and acknowledgements. This item is from the assessor to adopt a proclamation honoring Donna Corolo for her 42 years of service to the residents of Calaveras County in the assessor's office and congratulating her on her retirement.
Madam Chair, Honorable members of the Board, I'm Leslie Davis, County Assessor. As you know, because I let you know last -- well, it's been two months now, Donna Corolo retired from our office on December 30th, 2019. She didn't give me enough notice to get the proclamation on your agenda in last year's timing, but I got her to come back. She retired after a career of more than 42 years in the assessor's office, spanning four different county assessors. She started in 1977 as a map draftsman, one under the CETA program, and in 1979 became a permanent employee of the county. She continued to work in the mapping division, working her way up to Cadastral Specialist III, until her promotion to the Chief of Assessment Services in 2008. Donna's education was in graphics and design, and it came in handy when she first started because back then, we were still drawing maps by hand with ink on Mylar. As times changed, so did the mapping tools, and she transitioned to AutoCAD and GIS. As the Chief of Assessment Services, she managed the Assessment Services Division, which included our assessment analysts and mapping staff. Donna was one of the first in the state to be certified as an assessment analyst, and I brought her certificate number 50,002 -- they start at 50,000, that's how low her number is -- to hand over to her today. In addition to her career in the office, Donna's been involved in a number of community activities, serving on the board or council of the Central Sierra Planning Council, the Central Sierra Economic Development District, Calaveras County Employees Association, which is a precursor to the SEIU organization, Calaveras County Historical Society, Calaveras County Friends of the Library, and my personal favorite, Calaveras County Fair, and Jumping Frog Jubilee, the Friends. Donna is also a graduate of the Calaveras County Chamber of Commerce Leadership Program. She's been a resource to staff and to the public on the history of the county. Donna knows when and why maps were changed, and who owned what property, and when they owned it. And she was the person we used to be able to come to with those questions. You know, quite often, we make comments about losing historical knowledge or organizational knowledge, and Donna could be the poster child for that label. Her vast knowledge was a great help, not only to staff, but members of the public, who would research family history or something that had gone on with property in the county. Donna was always the one who would be able to give them that answer with a minimum amount of research, because she just knew it. Today's proclamation is a very tiny acknowledgement of the contributions Donna has made to the county and to our office, and I strongly encourage you to adopt that proclamation.
Thank you. Donna? Donna, up here.
Sit. Roll over.
Over here. Thank you. Yes, I can.
Oh, it's a photo op?
This is -- yeah, but then I gotta talk some, too.
Okay.
And I have to ask for public comment. And I tried to get your sister to come.
Really?
Oh, no, really.
She's busy. They're busy.
I know. She said, "You've gotta be kidding."
Yeah.
Well, I'm not gonna read everything, because Leslie did do some, but part of this is a test, and part of it, I have to say things so my colleagues can vote on whether we wanna do this for you. So, I'm gonna do the first whereas. Leslie said it. And the second whereas, she also did that, and that you were also involved in the introduction of GIS. And the reason you did so well with mapping is 'cause you're very artistic. Okay. And the third whereas, she did that, so I'll have to do that one.
Got a lot of where-asses there.
I know. So, and then the history of the county. I mean, you know where all the secrets are, so it's a good thing you've retired. And it's hasn't --
You're dead!
Well, no, no, no. You're not dead, but it's a good thing. You know, people come in and they say, "Well, I do this," and you say, "No, because I know who owned that property before you owned the property, so you can't tell me that, and no, you don't own this, and this is where your property line is." You know, we got that covered. And you've served with four different assessors. Do you remember their names?
Are you kidding? Yeah, well, sure.
No, I'm not. Could you please tell the audience?
Well, Chuck Clark hired me, and then Bill Raderman, and Grant, Randy Metzger, and now Leslie Davis.
Oh, good.
Do I win a prize?
No. And you were president of the Californian -- I can't pronounce it -- Mapping Association?
Mm-hmm.
I tried.
Wait. Actually, it was a double thing. Denise Tobler, who was a mapper in Amador County, and I did it together, 'cause our counties were so small. We did it as a -- together.
Oh, that's nice. It doesn't say Amador on here. Don't write it in.
That's okay.
Okay. And you've been involved in a number of community activities, as the assessor said, including the Central Sierra Planning Council, which is defunct, and the Central Sierra Economic Development, which Supervisor Stoppa is on their board. And past president of the Friends of the Library, and you are one of their primary patrons, 'cause you get a lot of books out at one time. And you also worked for Bergans, because the county didn't pay you enough.
That's true.
And you helped.
What a surprise!
That's not true these days. So, you were involved with establishing the --
Yeah, we gave out roses.
I know. Here, thank you. Just -- oh, wait a minute.
You didn't put your name on it?
I will.
Do it right. Put your name on it.
Right. There you go.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. And you're still a board member of Friends of the Fair, 'cause I see you out at the ranch, and we're -- yes. So, just in case, 'cause you don't have one on, here's a frog.
Wow! One of the gold ones. Cool.
Yeah, it's true. That's why I get to do this. And of course, it's the other things that the assessor said, so I don't have to whereas those. So, you did retire, as the assessor said, on the 30th of 2019, after more than 42 years. So, I wanna see if the board wants to acknowledge that. If there is, may I have a motion?
So good.
I have a motion by Supervisor Stoppa. Why? Did you make the motion? Because your wife would've killed you if you hadn't? May I have a second, please?
Second, ma'am.
A second, thank you. Supervisor Garamende, all in favor?
Public comment?
Oh, yeah, I forgot all that. I'm so excited here. Is there any public comment?
Are you kidding?
Lorie Durham, County Assessor's Office. I've had the privilege of working with Donna for over 25 years, and when I first come to work there, I was really scared of Donna. She knew her stuff, and she wasn't afraid to come out and tell you, "You don't know your stuff." So, that was a real pleasure to learn from you over the years. You will be greatly missed, and we hope you come by and stop by. I know I'll see you.
And bring cookies. Any other public comment?
Sure. I'm Will Moore from Valley Springs, and I was a draftsman illustrator in the U.S. Air Force. So, I sat at a drawing table with a T-scarer and a wooden 4H pencil, so I know where you're coming from. No computers, right? In those days, the Air Force had a computer. It filled a whole building back in Omaha.
Any other public comment? Yeah, bring it back to the board. I have a motion, a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes on a 401 absent vote of the board. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed that the Board of Supervisors acknowledges Donna Corolo for her dedication and exemplary service to the County of Calaveras. We extend our deep appreciation to Donna for her devotion to the residents of Calaveras, and be it further proclaimed that the Board commends you -- 'cause I'm talking to you -- for her achievements in the assessor's office, and congratulate Donna R. Corolo for the occasion of her retirement, and wish her a long, happy, and healthy retirement. Thank you. (APPLAUSE).
Can I take a picture real quick?
I mean, stomach in, chest out.
Turn your certificate around. There you go. All righty. Thank you.
Do you want a stick? Please. What do you mean?
No, I just, I get all choked up. Thank you very much. It was, it's been an honor and a pleasure to work here most of the time. You know, sometimes it's been tough, but I've always enjoyed it. I love the county, and I love the residents, and I really enjoy the history and so forth in it. I might not be out of the history part of it. There's a few -- Bill and Rourke have their way. I might be getting involved with the Historical Society.
Oh, I have a bit of history about you.
Oh, good!
I was gonna say.
So, this ought to make at least two of my colleagues happy. Okay. Donna, her parents, her grandparents, and her siblings went to Bragg, but because of a mistake, Donna went to Calaveras.
And one sister.
And one sister.
It wasn't a mistake. The districts were different. All my cousins went to Calaveras.
I know.
That's, that's what, that's how you were able to do all those years of hard work, is 'cause you went through Calaveras.[1725.33][1725.33](LAUGHTER).
So, this ought to make at least two of my colleagues happy. Okay, Donna, her parents, her grandparents, and her siblings went to Braggard, but because of a mistake, Donna went to Calaveras.
And one sister.
And one sister.
It wasn't a mistake, the districts were different. All my cousins went to Calaveras.
I know.
That's, that's what, that's how you were able to do all those years of hard work, is 'cause you went through Calaveras.
(laughter)
Okay, I'll see you.
Okay.
Thank you, Donna.
Thanks, Donna.
I'd like to move to the public.
Thank you.
Public comment. Any item of interest to the public that is within the subject matter jurisdiction of the board and is not posted on the consent or regular agendas may be addressed during the public comment period. California law prohibits the board from taking action on any matter which is not posted on the agenda unless it is determined to be an emergency by the Board of Supervisors. If public comment is completed before the 30-minute allotted time period, the board may immediately move to the next order of business. If public comment is not completed during the allotted time period, it will be continued as the last item of business in order to provide an opportunity for the remainder of comments to be heard.
Does anyone have any item they'd like to discuss with the board, not on the agenda? Okay, we're gonna close public comment and move to the regular agenda.
Item two is from the administrative office, to provide direction to staff regarding 2020 study sessions, the subjects to be studied, and the determination of their priority.
Mr. Al.
Good morning, Madam Chair and Supervisors. As mentioned previously, this item is before the board to discuss the 2020 study sessions and the order of priority for items of discussion. For both the Board of Supervisors and the public at the podium, I have provided two resource documents, the first of which is the agenda from the Tuesday, January 15th, 2019 meeting, which will help inform the board and the public as to what the board agreed on last year about this time to move forward. And then I've also provided a second page, which we discussed in July, which is both the board priorities for the study sessions, and then recommendation I made and my goals as well. So, they're just intended to inform the discussion and help guide where we go here for priority setting. And then one last thing I'd like to touch on is, we did already agree in the January study session when we provided an update for the cannabis program that we would bring back in March, some of the outstanding issues that are remaining for the cannabis program, particularly Measure C and some outstanding fees. So, that's, that's one item we've already basically lined out for the March study session.
Are there any questions, Mr. Al? Does the public have any comments they would like to make on this item? All right, I'd like to bring it back to the board for further discussion and any suggestions. Mr. Al, I do have a question, and maybe it's for all of you. How do we differentiate between a study session and an update? For example, I see Mr. Pat here, he's given us an update, Mr. Osborne has given us updates. How are we gonna differentiate between an update and a study session?
What I recall from having reviewed the, both the video and the minutes from your January 2019 session, is that study session items are those items that tend to be complicated and require maybe up to an hour or more discussion. Updates typically are only 20 to 30 minutes. So, the, the third Tuesdays have really been set aside for the most complex issues for the board to have dialogue, both with the public and amongst yourself, and give direction to staff as to how we'll move forward on those difficult issues.
Does the board have any comments they'd like to make on this, or any changes they would like, or items they'd like to add? Mr. Guaramendi.
Madam Chair, I, I really, you know, I think that having a study session, I know we've got one planned for March, but having a study session on employee engagement, I know that's primarily...
On what?
Employee engagement. I know that's primarily in the CAO's ballpark, but I think that understanding employee engagement and giving our endorsement to programs could be really good. I think that, you know, we've got a lot of new employees, we're trying to create a new and improved culture. I think that that would be something I would like to take on at some point this year.
Okay. Mr. Mills.
Yes, I know that the board had discussed briefly about the Lake Tullock short-term rentals and wanting to move forward with more of a countywide approach to the rental policy. I'm, I'm concerned that the number of updates that are going to be required as part of the general plan update is by itself quite a monumental undertaking. And, you know, are we gonna be driving ourselves to the point where we're gonna have to add staff or additional funding, I'm looking right at Mr. Maurer here, to accomplish so many of those things that are, in essence, time-critical? Whether we're talking about vicious dog ordinances, or dark skies, or whatever housing element, it's all gonna take time. So, I just wanna be sure that whatever we're going to do, we don't wrap ourselves up in additional demands upon staff that may not be easily accomplished.
I agree with that. So, are you recommending that we possibly remove this until it fits in with planning schedule?
Exactly.
Okay. Mr. Stopper.
A few things. You know, beginning with your conversation, we can, you know, going down PG&E settlements, taken care of. There's a further discussion going into March on cannabis, I believe. You know, the, the updates from Public Works are always appreciated. I think we're past a study session on it. I think it's more on actual things on there, but the other thing was fire here. I believe that we should consider having a study session on fuel reduction, and bring members of possibly the Fire Safe Council and RCD in here, 'cause they're facilitating a lot of these things getting done, and have a discussion on how we can help, as a county, them moving forward on continuing to make our communities safer overall with the fuel reduction. Another thing that kinda goes in with the cannabis thing is, over the years, we've consistently talked about possible environmental damage that has been done over the years by illegal grows. The county, we've, we've talked about it, but we've never really moved forward on giving direction on actually cleaning these sites up. And what we're gonna do as a county to move this forward, I mean, there was originally a, I mean, a few years ago, they brought forward 8.06, which brought the community up in an uproar, 'cause I believe it was overzealous, to the point now that, you know, we're working on something that's not gonna be demanding of every citizen inside the county. But I think part of 8.06 goes into that, and discussion on possibly getting, moving forward on getting environmental health to work with code compliance, so environmental health can properly address the issues while, after code compliance does the sightings, and how we're gonna direct them as a board to work together on that. You know, the remediation is what I'm talking about.
Mr. Al, that could be included in the discussion on cannabis? Do you see that as a...
Yeah, actually, I think it's a nice dovetail. There's obviously some things that we wanna discuss as we move forward internally about how we make the cannabis program an umbrella program that addresses everything from the regulatory program, to law enforcement, to code compliance and environmental. We might have to break it into manageable pieces, where we do an update on the outstanding items from the existing program, then we bring back, maybe around the CAO recommended budget timeframe, so we can consider things that may be important to the board, get included into the budget.
Mr. Tobler, did you have something?
I really am confused, and I, I don't know if I'm the only one, but both of the handouts that we have, these were last year's goals.
Right.
So, some of these have already been completed as they were stated here. So, we're just continuing them again this year. Is that what the understanding is?
Somewhat. I mean, I checked off the PG&E settlement, the Public Works things. I think it kind of goes off of Marita's original question, things that we've already done that are gonna be agendaized.
Okay, okay. I just wanted to make sure that I was completely understanding.
Okay.
So, you'd be comfortable if that's just included as a package?
Yeah, I think that, I think that definitely needs to be included in the discussion when we, we're talking about it overall. I mean, it's not necessarily a part of the ordinance so much as how we deal with illegal grows and afterwards, and the environmental impacts from what they do. You know, I, we've pretty much checked off facilities and master plan, they're, they're moving forward on it, you know, we'll get our updates. The budget, long-term planning, I discussed this last year about a strategic plan. It takes years to put something like that together, but I think that we should keep that, also keep that in mind possibly later in the year as we're doing our budget. The strategic plan is crucial on our direction and everything, and, you know, that, you know, for implementation of a strategic plan, it's gonna take some talks when we go into our bu- budget. And I think that, you know, covers the other things that I wanna add to what we had already discussed that are high on my priority.
Is anybody keeping notes?
I think I am.
Okay.
Unless you want to.
No.
On the budget and long-term, would that not be included as part of when we go into budget hearings?
Well, the budget hearings will be specific to the next fiscal year budget. We certainly can include pieces in there where we make recommendations for some of these priorities that would need to be funded. When we discussed it last, my recollection was that it was more around our long-term fiscal stability, and more encompassing, not just a fiscal year budget, but everything from our investment, investments, and our revenue strategies, what we may look at for long-term revenue stability, and, and ways we might be able to reduce our expenditures and make sure we bring that together as a, as a package for consideration for the board for long-term, as opposed to just a one fiscal year budget.
Except I've always been supportive of doing it at least two years, if at all possible, but part of, I see our budget being, taking into consideration what are long terms, like building an animal shelter. Should we not include that, or should we, yes or no, into the current 2021 budget? So, I, I guess I see them more intertwined, but I don't know how the rest of you feel about it. I mean, I don't wanna mess up the budget process.
What I would describe our current state as is more year-to-year. As you know, there's things like the animal shelter, the DA's building, and some other priorities that we're managing step-by-step right now. That, how we finance our long-term priorities would be, I think, in the, the bigger discussion, so that we can lay out what our event horizon looks like for particular priorities, and how we would start staging in, for example, either financing, or, you know, whether it's a general obligation bond, or parcel fees, or whatnot, to try and support some of our other priorities.
Okay. Any comments about that, Mr. Mills?
Well, I just, I'd like to throw some other things out, but let's get this finished first.
All right. Do you have any other?
I have all kinds more stuff, but I can come back to it later.
Well, you know, it's right now, or, you know, you're, that's it.
You're on, throw it on the wall. Throw it on the wall, let's see what happens.
Yeah, throw it on the wall.
Discussions of Title 25 with our building official.
Would that be a study session, or could it be an action item?
I think it's, it can be an action item, for one. You know, I think, I, I think we definitely need, as a board, to sit down and talk about, you know, what direction we wanna give our, our building official and other people as we move forward, somewhat in a economic role, as like, how do we wanna proceed as a county, you know? And give direction so that you can work forward towards implementing the way the board sees us moving forward as a county. There's multiple issues that have come up in my mind, that I think a lot of times this county has put forward fees and regulations that have chased business away from, from the county, per se, at the point where we could be more open, provide possible exemptions, or, you know, easier routes for people to do business, so that we can start bringing in tax dollars later down the road, not front-loading it so hard as bringing in afterwards. So, I think it's a discussion that does need to be had. That's my opinion.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I'm gonna pile on what Supervisor Stopper's talking about. I think that that is something good, and I would ask that in these study sessions, we lined it up more than just giving us information, but posed to us some hard, some policy questions to ask us, you know? If our goal is to change Title 25, what does that mean, and what choices do we have to make in order for that to go forward? I think the same thing happens with strategic plan, and they're tied together in many ways, as has been pointed out, but really bring in those questions, okay, you wanna go A, or do you wanna go B? You're the policy chair, and then let them go.
Okay, that's a good idea. Mr. Mills, anything else? You've used it?
For, for now, for now, nothing else.
Mr. Mills?
Let's go back to the, the planning aspect in these community plans. 10 years ago, there was a grant that was given to Copperopolis for the purpose of developing a community plan. It was $50,000 that was invested in that plan. I don't know what the cost is gonna be for us to pull together the Valley Springs and the Copperopolis community plans, but it's not gonna be free. So, we have to accommodate that somewhere in our budget, but also understand that with boundary changes, with projects coming in, projects going out, there's, there's housing elements, there's transportation, there's a lot of other pieces that have to be addressed as part of those community plans, so that's, that's gonna take up some time and effort. One of the things that is not in this list is water. We are in the groundwater basin authority, whether we like it or not, and we are going to have a key role, just as Stanislaw County does, for the Eastern San Joaquin Authority, in the implementation of the plan, which was put together over the last three years. You couple that together with, and I'm not sure if anyone's really aware, that the county can find a way to get 5,000 acre-feet of water storage at Nollonies, the county, not CCWD. And would we wanna go down that road as an asset for the county? We also should be talking, continue to talk about the JPA discussion with Tuolumne County on Lake Tullock, because right now, our sheriff's department's expending funds to maintain marine safety there, our local fire district's spending funds to maintain safety on that lake, and they're not getting reimbursed. Where, where does that come from? It's coming from us, as a general fund. And also, dealing with the docks, there's over 500 docks on Lake Tullock alone. What is the value in the assessments of having the ability to put docks on a, on a federally-operated reservoir in California, in a unique situation, that I think we need to have a better control over it? So, this is all part of planning, it's part of water, and it... And would we want to go down that road as an asset for the county? We also should be talking, continue to talk about the J P A discussion with Tuolumne County on Lake Tullock because right now our sheriff's department is expending funds to maintain marine safety there. Our local fire district is spending funds to maintain safety on that lake and they're not getting reimbursed. Where does that come from? It's coming from us as a general fund. And also dealing with the docks, there's over 500 docks on Lake Tullock alone. What is the value in the assessments of having the ability to put docks on a federally operated reservoir in California in a unique situation that I think we need to have a better control over it? So this is all part of planning, it's part of water and it needs to be somewhat of a priority in, in bringing back to local control what is happening around Lake Tullock. Environment, I agree. You know, if we, if we had a very broad discussion on the environmental impacts and the cleanups, I'm all in. I am all in. And when we talk about what is holding back our environmental health department from maybe doing some of the things we'd like to have them done, it's a policy decision, it's up to us to make that policy decision. And it comes down to establishing thresholds that are maybe different from what the state's thresholds are. If their, if their thresholds are too high, that means that those butane cylinders that they found at the high school would have been taken care of by public, by environmental health rather than having the sheriff's department deal with it. How do we lower that threshold to maintain some level of safety and continuity within our own county? I'm really deeply concerned with the number of insurance cancellations in our county with homeowners and how, and I think to Mr. Stoppa's point, yes, I think it has something to do with our fuel reduction programs and our fuel breaks and we need to just, we don't want to just drag in pieces, let's drag them all in. Everybody that's involved in fuel breaks, fuel management, fuel reduction, tram mortality, bring them all in so that everybody can look each other in the eye and then we can decide from ourselves where do we fit within those policies that need to be established for it? Title 25, I agree. That's, I had it on my list. It's, it's an important aspect to be able to provide affordable housing in our county. And I don't think we continue to ignore it. I talked to Doug Oliver about this last Friday. How do we implement that quickly and put it as a policy for the county? Fire marshal program is going to be real difficult to attain, but there's a lot of glitches with it, but I think that Doug can work those out. Track it, how are we doing on track it? And is it, is it a successful program? I think we all have things that we think are more priority in our districts than other parts of the county. We have to look at this from a perspective of a county as a whole and how does it impact our community safety, our economic viability and our, our safety of our environment. So I'm just throwing some things out there, see if we can get a discussion going.
I think we need to start meeting another day. Do you have any others you want to add?
Not the most.
God, do not, yes.
Madam Chair, I think that when we structure these, and I think we learned some of this last year, let's make sure we structure our study sessions on things that we can actually do.
I agree.
I don't want to talk about things that are long, far beyond our jurisdiction because it just takes time. It's great, we could have that conversation over glass line, but let's focus on the work that we do. And so let's, I just want to make sure we do that.
I agree, which I, which I think the idea of on all study sessions to pose, what are the policy questions that the board needs to answer? I have two that I want to put in. One is master plan for aging. That starts off with the governor. And we have lots of departments that deal with it. We have Area 12, I H S S, public guardians, conservatorships, Health and Human Services, you know, the access to services, should we collaborate more on some of the services? And it's all sort of confusing. Who do you go to? Are we doing it? And there's emphasis on the state level on this, so there could be funding if that's something that we need. The second one I have, which I've mentioned before, is redistricting because A V eight forty-nine has new requirements for redistricting.
Does that happen in this, this county or Mantra?
That's a state, yes. When the census is complete, we will be doing redistricting. In this county, I'd like to, maybe it could be towards the end of the year. I'm not saying when it should be, but I believe it needs to be done at least this year, at least set up the process. I think the board needs to understand what kinds of things we have to now do in redistricting that we didn't have to do before. So those, we don't, redistricting by Calaveras High and Bret Hart High, we, I mean, the way we've been doing it in the past. No, so I just think that's something that we need to deal with, so.
Can I speak to that real quick?
Yeah.
In the, in the redistricting piece and talking with Rebecca Turner, as long as we stay within a five percent range on our population, it's not by voters, it's by population.
Well, yeah, that's what, that's what it talks about, but it's a lot more restrictive than it used to be.
Correct. And there's an additional piece that Rebecca brought to us here recently, and that is that when you have 22 different ballots for voters in San Andreas alone because of the various districts' boundaries that are, we, we can create our own little nasty world for our staff to deal with. So I need, we, we need to carefully look at where are existing district boundaries for lighting, cemetery, fire, et cetera, and not, not create so much overlap within the voting areas would save us a lot of money and time. So just kind of keeping that in mind.
So I'm not saying what it needs to look like, I'm just saying that the rules have changed on redistricting and the, the things that we as a county will have to do and of course things that the state has to do. And it's a significant impact. And of course, I think we should all be encouraging people to fill out the census, but that's not a study session item, that's an editorial comment. Okay. Does any of the board members have another item that they would like to add? The one on the P G N E settlement, does that really need to be a study session? That's already been done?
We already, we completed, we completed a lot of these.
I might suggest on P G N E, I've reported out to the board several times over the last few months of what we've been doing and work in those areas, but it's worth an information session, twenty or thirty minutes to get a report out of, of what's been done at this point, just, just for accountability purposes.
Okay, not a study session.
I'll fit that in, not necessarily a study session, just a regular board meeting for an information session.
Okay, great. So we have quite a few things that have been added. Employee engagement, Title 25, water and the different permutations Mr. Mills talked about, under the fire, under fire, the whole portions of it, I think, fuel reduction.
You brought it up first.
Pardon?
He brought it up first. Yeah, no, I'm, I'm not worried about who brought it up. I mean, it's something that needs to be done, yes.
Right, didn't you bring it up?
Yeah.
Yeah, it didn't work.
Okay. Public Works, we're letting Mr. Pack just do a update and speak fast. Okay, so that's off the study session. Is there anything, counsel, do you know of anything from your perspective that we should be adding?
There've been a, there've been a variety of code changes that various board members have brought up as wanting staff to address in the coming months. So I don't know if there had been discussion previously of having a study session on Title Six, which is the animal section of the code. So I don't know if you'd like to have a study session at some point to give staff direction on possible changes to that or other sections of county code.
Well, I guess I would look at it if it's something, first of all, if you have five supervisors all coming in saying, I want you to deal with this code, that, that kind of puts pressure on staff. But if it, if you're hearing common denominators, maybe it wouldn't be a study session, but could be an action item.
Well, I think, I mean, it will of course end up being an action item once, you know, a revised code comes to the board for consideration. From, from my perspective as a person who would be drafting the revisions or, or with other attorneys in my office would be working on those changes, it might be nice to have a study session with some board direction as to what change, as to policy changes.
So to bring, to bring forth, like, we've been asked to look at these eight codes, board, which ones do you say is the priorities?
What you're looking for is, I'm sorry, sorry.
Um, we, we could do that or if there were just, again, specific, I know that I bring up Title Six because I know that that's one that has come up multiple times and I, I believe a majority of the board would like to see some changes made, but it would be good to know what those policy, to get some direction on what those policy changes might be. It may make sense to do that in a study session, then we can revise the code accordingly with what we think was the board direction policy-wise and then bring that revision back, you know, for consideration. There may be others as well and in addition to Title Six, but.
If, if I may, the, yeah, I think what, what Mr. Kay is looking for is directions so that they can draft something directly with the board's intent.
For all codes or just?
Well.
I would like for Title Six.
Title Six would need some direction, but what I'm saying is we could stack some of these in, like Title Six, I believe would be a fairly short conversation. That's not a full day. So we could put that in with another longer conversation on a, on a single study session.
I was going to ask, I was going to ask you.
And then there's one other thing that we definitely need to address in my mind, and I believe that many of the board members would agree, agree with me that I didn't bring up earlier, is I W M, integrated waste management and how we're going to proceed in the future. And, because there's going to be some changes coming, coming up here very soon. And we need to start moving forward on what the board intends to and where we're going in direction with I W M.
And who might be the person to do it?
Who or what?
Or what, yeah, so.
It's definitely a conversation that needs to be had.
There's, there's many codes, Chair, that are going to need to be changed as a result of the general plan update. I think we generally, I, I gave a list, I think, over to the C E O when we updated the general plan, but, you know, we don't want overlap effort here in what staff is doing to bring those codes into compliance with the general plan and then want to have a separate discussion simply because that's not going to be productive at all. So I want to be sure that the board has that complete list of all of those updates that we're going to need to do to comply with the general plan. I think that would help us in determining which pieces of the policy need to be, as immediate need, that we need to have an immediate discussion on, some of them can be put off till a later point because they don't have a.
I thought we, we did that, we set the priorities when Mr. Maurer was here for those, for the implementation.
For the implementation, but there's some of those that are immediate, need to have immediate discussion. I'm sure he's going to have questions on what the board's policy and direction is going to be.
So why don't we leave it so he feels he needs it, he can bring it?
But leave a window, a window of space and time that he can do that.
Okay. So the other thing that I understand you're looking for is what we see as the priorities. I mean, we could have two or three of them on the same day.
So what I might suggest as a point to move forward, I don't recall all of the discussion that you had a year ago when you were setting the priorities, but in hearing all the discussion, there are some alignment in topics and there's some alignment that can be done with both the calendar year and fiscal year where if some priorities are set, they, they will need some budget priority as well. So if it obliges, if you wouldn't mind obliging me this, that I take what we've talked about here, reduce it into what would look like a schedule where I can put things together, I can, I can consult with the department heads on what things they might be, information sessions and those that would be study sessions, and then I can bring back a recommendation to the board.
The other thing we didn't have here is are there study sessions that staff thinks that we should be having?
So I, I did poll them at the department heads meetings with the exception of one, which is P S P S and bringing back a debrief, both what we do internally and where we're at externally, the board has covered all of the suggestions that I've gotten from the department heads.
Okay. All right. Any other comments from the board?
Yeah, I have another one to consider. This is something that, if you recall, there's been multiple times people have come before this board and public comment about receiving these reassessment bills from the assessor's office that are three and four years in arrears. And it just led me to think, if that money was collected in the year in which it was due, I would be able to put that into treasury or somewhere and collect 3.94% return on it, which we're not collecting right now. I don't know how that system all works, but is, I think we need to fully understand the implications of not collecting the assessment, the tax in the year that it's due and what that means. How do we help get that issue turned around? And what is it costing us when we don't have access to those funds in the fiscal year in which those funds are due? I'm just looking at the book value more than anything here, and I don't know where to go with it. I'm just throwing it out there that I could see it as having some type of a, an impact to us financially.
I don't disagree with that, but we've sort of discussed this before and I think maybe we need to bring it up again. And that would be something the board has consistently wanted to know, what kinds of things can the county do to help the assessor? And trying to think of things outside the norm, do we need to hire an outside firm to come in and help? You know, to have the state come in and look at us? You know, what is it that they're seeing? Again, what is it we can and should be doing? Mr. Guermendi, I know you've been active on this. Do you have any thoughts on bringing this back again?
Well, it'd probably be a good thing to discuss with the assessor.
Right.
Sorry. Be a good thing to discuss with the assessor since she is independent and she'd be the first to tell us that. So we'll have to work with her to find a way to bring that forward in a productive way.
Okay, you might discuss that with her. Mr. Stoppa, you had something else?
You know, post, as we move forward, post-public comment, I think we should go through this full list and decide as the board what does need to be on the priorities for this year for these and which ones are not so high on the priority list.
That's what he said he would do. He would try and package them.
Because, I mean, there's a few things that have been brought up that definitely could be dealt with, but, you know, like with, with the J P A that was brought up on Lake Tullock, for instance, talking with some of the supervisors in Tuolumne, they aren't moving forward on anything of the sort so far. And so they, and so there's no showing of interest there. So that's a conversation that could be had in the future if they were to show interest. For now, you know, we'd just be spinning our wheels talking about something that we have no power over.
But I think Mr. Mills is looking at it a little broader than just the J P A.
Right.
And it's true. It would include, for instance, mirroring the dock ordinance that Tuolumne County does and bringing that into our realm and our codes. It works very successfully for them, so it isn't a matter that we're going to be doing anything different, but trying to find a uniformity, because it's two counties on that lake, a uniformity with our marine safety division and ours and sharing the expenses and the costs of providing those services. And at some point, is Tridam going to need to, to basically pony up to take their responsibility for what they've been given under that FERC license? So this is a broader conversation that does involve the federal government, does involve a J P A. But there's one piece of this, this whole Tridam thing that really is quite disturbing to me, and that is that the residents around that lake have no elected representative to represent them in the interests of docks and dock placements and land use surrounding the flow adjustment on Lake Tullock. That, that is literally violating their ability to have representation. If they had a voting member on the Tridam. If they had a voting member on the Tridam board, that would be one thing, but they have nobody, and I can't represent them on those issues to the JPA either. So it just creates a conundrum, and it's a long-term problem. It's been going on literally for decades, and it involves dragging those people into federal court in Fresno every time they have a disagreement. At some point, these people need to be able to come to our, our Superior Court here in Calaveras County and to be represented directly on issues resolved, revolving around our county and the issues of our county.
So, Mr., maybe if you and I and the CAO got together and narrowed this down.
Sure.
To at least what it is we could study, do it a study session now.
That would be effective.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
I agree.
So we're, we're gonna take that off the table for now, but you and Mr. Mills and I will get together. Okay. Um, so you're gonna package these items? I don't, unless the board, a board member has something that they think we need to do right away on something that should be dealt with at the next, um, at our next meeting?
I think we've laid out some requirements already, um, the first of which is, in the next month would be the outstanding cannabis issues. I might suggest that, uh, we have a discussion about PSPS either in the March or May timeframe because, uh, that's gonna be entering into, um, the timeframe, we need to be concerned about it. I would also like to give latitude to Peter Mauer to bring back what he needs to in terms of prioritization in, in our discussion, so we can fit it in the schedule for the general plan update and anything he needs there.
I guess I'm confused. I thought he did that, and we gave, and we committed to it, so what is it that we'd be coming back?
So I don't want to speak for, for Peter, but my impression was that that was a pretty big plate of work that entailed some policies and some decisions that need to be made by the board. There may be periods of time we need to bring back discussions more than just a 20-minute information session. Is, is that a fair statement, Peter?
Could Peter speak to that, please?
Thank you.
So yes, last month, uh, we had a study session about, you know, how to implement the general plan. I feel like I've got sort of a jumpstart on, uh, all the rest of the departments on, on this item. Um, so there's about a dozen items that the board identified as being priorities. Now, some of these we can move forward right away. There's, you know, not a lot of, of policy discussion that needs to be done, but as we move, move forward with some of the other ones, particularly, say, the zoning ordinance update, comprehensive zoning ordinance update, there will be policy discussions that we will need to have. I fully support your discussion about, um, you know, giving direction. You know, if there's a policy question, we need to ask you, here are the options, what do you want us to do with that? I think one of the more successful ventures we had along that line was the second cannabis workshop. We had, you know, a long list of issues that we could have gone one way or the other on, and we asked you what you wanted us to do, you heard from the public, and you said, write it this way. That, I think, was a very successful, um, process we went through to come up with an ordinance. I see that happening in a variety of different, um, issue areas as we move forward with code updates, not just zoning code, but other issues, animals and things like that that you've talked about already. One of the things that's been mentioned a couple times, Title 25. We had a, um, an item on the board's agenda back in December, I believe it was, when we were, um, looking at some grant funding to implement the housing element. Um, it was fairly narrowly focused because we were just talking about those measures that addressed, um, or that, that qualified for this specific grant, but I think that a broader discussion of housing, um, you know, how we, um, help people who lost homes in the Butte Fire, I mean, right now, I think we're only at 20% of homes that have been rebuilt, uh, for those lost in, in the Butte Fire, for a variety of reasons. And we might look at a broader picture. Title 25 is clearly a tool that we can use to help that, but I think there's a bigger housing issue picture that we need to look at, um, so that would be something I would also suggest that we bring back at some time, uh, you know, what can we do to implement the housing element? You know, for many years, we go through the five-year update process, we're done with that, uh, we can put it on the shelf, and then it comes back five years later, we do it again, but I think it's really time that we focus on trying to implement some of those programs, see what really works. You know, we now have a housing coordinator that's shared between my department and Health and Human Services. She's really gung-ho and ready to move forward on some programs that I think will really assist the county, so, um, the other thing that has also been mentioned is fire. Uh, there are a number of policies and implementation measures in the general plan that address fire safety and resiliency, and I think that's something that we could look at, those policies and measures, and say, okay, what can we do to move forward on, on those in the near and, and sort of next phase, future? But you're right, we do, I have my plate full, uh, we're moving forward on some of those, but we will need to come back at certain periods of time to identify how the board wants us to handle these. And I could write an ordinance that I think is perfect, but if it's not the direction of the board, it'll go nowhere. And so I want to make sure that what I am working on is the consensus direction that the board, or at least a majority direction, that the board wants us to take on some of these issues. Peter, let me just speak real quickly to the housing element, because I did find out, um, Jameson Conservation Center is one of the largest employers in Toowomi County, and yet a very tiny portion of that is actually housed in Calaveras, because we don't have workforce housing in the basin in Copperopolis. So, uh, you know, finding ways to talk about that housing element early on, I think, will be very helpful to the discussion for a community plan or anything else that's gonna go down, go on down there. Uh, people drive tremendous distances to go to work there because they can't find housing in Calaveras County that's adequate to their need. I agree. 100% workforce housing is an issue that we really haven't addressed, uh, very well, um, and it's, it's an issue. You look at anyone who, you know, a schoolteacher, a firefighter, a county employee, and they try to find affordable rental housing or housing to buy, and it's just not available. And so we need to look at, why is that, and then what are some of the solutions that we can address? Thank you.
So that could be grouped in with Title 25 at the same time and multiple other issues, taking the broad, broader conversation to the housing element and how we're gonna proceed as the county?
So Title 25 was one of those, um, implementation measures that the board said, yes, go ahead and work with HCD, let's get some money to move forward with that. I know Doug has already done some work on that. Um, I don't think that by itself warrants a full study session, but I think it'd be part of a, a broader study session on, on housing issues.
Excellent. Thank you, Peter.
Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. The, there's no further comments from the board. We're going to an essence, pardon?
Public comment.
I already did.
Sorry. I can't, I think we did memory test.
You're going to package some of these together? I think those things that are critical have already floated to the top and, um, come back and just give us, start scheduling them. If you could send out how you see it being packaged, if the board has any concerns, they can let you know.
I might suggest that we bring it back, I'll bring it back as a information item and line out what it may look like, and that'll give us a little bit more clarity, and then the board can give direction and give the public comment.
That's fine.
Opportunity to comment on it once they see it in a, more like a calendar.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Mills? Did you have anything else?
Unless you want me to ask for a public comment.
Okay, thank you. And don't forget employee engagement. All right. Madam clerk?
Item three is from the administrative office, to receive a report from the debt advisory committee meeting.
So this item is before the board of supervisors to report out, uh, about the debt advisory committee meeting that we had subsequent to, um, the board's direction after hearing about the HVAC replacement project. Uh, as, as was directed, we met on January 30th, 2020. We had nearly the entire debt advisory committee, which is pretty substantial, uh, present and accounted for. Uh, we did a pretty robust review of the project, and ultimately, the debt advisory committee took two actions. Uh, the first of which, after reviewing the, uh, public finance policy that we have in existence, the, uh, committee recognized that there's, uh, one, that the policy is a bit outdated, and two, there are actions in the policy that should be at least annual actions, uh, maybe more so. So our first action was to create an ad hoc committee of what I've termed the county leadership, uh, fiscal leadership group, and so that would be the auditor controller, the assessor, the treasurer, tax collector, and the CAO's office to review the policy and update that and bring that back to the board for recommended changes. And then the second action, after reviewing the HVAC replacement project, um, was a pretty clear ask for financial data on the project. We simply reviewed, uh, the same data the board had, had, uh, previous to the debt advisory. So the, the committee felt that to be able to make a stronger recommendation going forward, they at least need to have some financial, uh, data relative to the project and what financing may look like. Subsequent to the action of the debt advisory committee, I've put, uh, things in motion for a financial advisor to, uh, put recommendations forward to the debt advisory committee, and tasks this week will be to schedule those presentations, um, for the debt advisory.
Any questions from the board, any comments? Any questions or comments from the public on this item?
Mike?
Oh, I keep forgetting. I know, I'm sorry. I keep forgetting. That's gonna be the vice chair's responsibility. Any questions or comments from the public on this item? Okay, enclosed, public comment? Does any member of the ad hoc committee wanna say anything on this?
I think, I think CAO L. did a good job in this cabinet, it was a good meeting. Um, we recognize we've got a task to get done by the board, and we're gonna get it done.
I think that there's a nice outcome of having the policy looked at again. It's probably been years.
Or decades.
Or decades, okay. Okay, thank you. Okay, um, we'll move to, um, the next item, but we're gonna take a five-minute recess. We're on. Thank you. I'd like to reconvene the meeting. Madam Chair, no, I'm Madam Chair, Madam Clerk.
Item four is from the Administrative Office. To provide direction to staff on how to proceed with respect to a new animal services building and shelter.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Supervisors, and members of the public.
Chairs.
And Madam Clerk. We are here before you today to talk about animal services as directed by the board. This is a study session to discuss options moving forward and to give administration direction. This, however, isn't a new topic to this board, or members of our public, or the grand jury, as you well know. To give a little background, the board, this board has received discussion, or had discussions several times on this particular item. In particular, there was discussion specifically about potential locations on several occasions. Location being the biggest topic, as we know, there were other discussions as well, but I want to focus on the location first. As you can see here, we've been talking about this particular item since 2010. We discussed it again in 2011, again in 2013, and then 2014. On December 16, 2014, there was quite a robust discussion about particular locations. I've listed the locations from the item here. Obviously, we discussed locations on the current government center, near the main library. We talked about Highway 4 and Balacito Road, CCWD property on Angels Road in San Andreas, and then ultimately, the final discussion was on a county-owned property up here on the hill west of the courthouse. On that December 16, 2014, meeting, the board took two particular actions that are important to note. The first action was to dedicate 6.93 acres for potential location for animal services. And within the item, it discussed specifically development by the year of 2019. I've referenced two exhibits here, Exhibit A and B. I'll get to them momentarily, but they were provided in the original board action on December 16, 2014. So I'll pull them back out of the archives and point to them here in a few more pages. That same day, the next action was for the board to adopt a resolution approving the initial study and mitigate a mitigated negative declaration. I bring this up, but I don't want to leave you or the public with the impression that because the board took action in 2014 for the ISMND, it doesn't necessarily mean that it's still valid. There's a couple of conditions that we'd have to consider, and I'm not an expert on this. Obviously, we have CEQA experts, but it's worth noting that while there was a board action, we'd have to look at any subsequent project to see if there were changes to the project, or if there's any substantial changes to the project since the action in 2014, or if there's any new information relative to significant effects that we didn't know in 2016. This will be important as we discuss further, but I wanted to start first with the land that was dedicated in the action. I know this isn't that informative, but this was Exhibit A. This was what was first in the presentation to the board. What is specific about this, you can't see them here that well, but the exact coordinates of the parcel the board dedicated are noted here. More importantly, you can see this is noted as Exhibit B, and this shows the significant portion of county property that would encapsulate the six acres. And I'm going to drill in just a little bit here, past the actual exhibit into the specifics of the location. And as I mentioned earlier, the location is up on the hill here, just west of the courthouse. And you all are more familiar with this construction up the hill than I am, but as you can see here, the jail facility, and then ultimately, the construction of the courthouse, and then our animals, our current animal services down here. Obviously, we're down below here. And so the coordinates that I showed in Exhibit A are this parcel that are listed in Exhibit B. I know I'm going through this, there'll be time for questions here as we move forward, but, and I want to get it, obviously, open to the board discussion, but the options as they present themselves today are for us to potentially consider the sites that have already been discussed by the board in previous sessions. We certainly can consider other locations that weren't included in board discussion to this point on other county-owned properties. It certainly is an option to consider the thought of procurement of new land that would be appropriate for animal services, or last but not least, move forward with a location previously dedicated, and that's specifically the 6.93 acres documented in Exhibits A and B that I've gone over. And I know this, I've gone through this pretty quickly here, but my recommendation would be, as you know, Brian Moss did a lot of this work when he was over this particular area. So the discussions he and I have had is that there's been a lot of time and effort invested by the board and staff to this point to dedicate the property, consider a project on that particular property. And so we're of the mind that we rely on that previous work and not necessarily recreate the wheel. But if the board were of the mind to follow this recommendation, that based on your action last month in making this a priority for the ad hoc, then I could, the facilities ad hoc, then I could work with our facilities team to begin bringing forward project specifications through the ad hoc committee, and then ultimately to the board. So we would have a venue for discussing, the initial discussions with some members of the board, so we can flesh out some of the recommendations on what we do in that particular property before they come forward to the board. And so that gives us a value of relying on work that's already been done, but also having a smaller venue for us to be able to flesh out some ideas with the ad hoc before we bring them here to use valuable time of the Board of Supervisors. So again, I know I've gone through that pretty quickly. It's just a simple summary of the work that's been done to date. It's obviously up to the board's discretion and discussion what we do moving forward. But that's the extent of the content that I have this morning.
Are there any questions or initial questions or comments from the board? Yeah.
I do have a question, because I remember when I first got on the board, there was discussion with the Humane Society about a shared facility. Sorry. Are those plans anywhere accessible? Are they anything that we would consider as functional to what our needs would be at this time? What is the status of that?
So we do still have those plans. Using my own words, I would describe it as being somewhat overbuilt for what we may consider because of the, some of the funding options that were under consideration at the time. But the base building and the initial, what we would call the programming and what needs to exist in the building is still of use to us, and we certainly could use it, at least for base documents, if not potentially the design of the initial building.
Who paid for those plans?
I don't know. I'd have to investigate that.
Well, my concern is if Humane Society put a lot of funding and effort into it, I would like to be sure that there's some consideration given for their effort. Secondly...
What do you mean?
In other words, did the Humane Society stick a lot of their money into the creation of those plans? Do they have...
We'll get to that. I'm going to ask Mr. Moss to come up.
So next would be setting aside an up facility for expandable into the future, as nothing so permanent is what's temporary in this county. And I would like to be sure that the large animal piece is considered, so we're not constantly heading out to the fairgrounds and requiring their staff to be taking care of things which we ourselves should be taking care of as part of our program.
That's part I can't speak to in terms of what was already done in the initial planning, but that would be something that we would do in the programming and that we would be able to bring back. Really, that's the stage we're at in the DA's building, as well as the programming piece of it. And programming entails developing particular specifications as to what should be housed in the space, and what we would need as a priority, and then any potential, what I would call value-add additions that might be necessary moving forward. But in fact, what you're saying is what I would suggest, that we work through the ad hoc here in the near future with the recommendation that I've made.
And I got to go back to whenever we're considering a parcel, whether it's on our own property or it's an off-site property, what is the cost per foot to acquire? In other words, there is a value on land, and we want to be sure that we're making an adequate use of it for the amount of value that it's taking up in our system as an asset. So just want that to be included. I think the staff recommendations are always very valuable, and I would like to hear from both Mr. Moss and Brad about what they think, too, because they're the ones, Brad, you're the one that's going to have to live with this, whatever we do.
I don't know. I thought I'd put it under the Board of Supervisors. Before I ask them to come up, I want to see, are there any public comments on this item?
I also got on the Taxpayer Association. Probably the first question one would want to ask would be, what should be the extent of the county government's responsibility when it comes to animals and pets? I've got two cats and two chickens, and I don't know if I may be violating a government rule or not. One of the good things about animals is that they have a lot of supporters with money. And it would seem like we would want to allow the Humane Society and other groups that support animals to have the most say, and also the responsibility for expense on everything that had to do with animals. It just seems to make sense. These people are experts. They love the animals, and some of our supervisors love animals, but we're not sure they all do. And so it is wise to have limited government, and as a good principle, we should ask ourselves just how extensive county influence should be in regards to animals. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Segala. Any other public comments or questions on this item? You want to close that? Mr. Moss, did you want to?
Good morning. Brian Moss, Administrative Office.
Going back to the ones that Mr. Mills talked, the plans...
Yes.
That were put together by, however it was done. Did the county pay for those plans, or did the Humane Society?
Humane Society did.
Okay. And we have those plans?
If we don't have those plans, we can certainly get a copy of those plans.
Okay. And...
I mean, certainly with the Humane Society's indulgence, they have supplied those plans in the past. I should clarify that.
Thank you. Mr. Mills, is there anything else you wanted Mr. Moss to answer?
Brian, you've been involved with, during the planning process of putting those plans together.
Correct.
The overbuilt that CAO alt talked about, I would almost want to concur with that because it was going to be a shared facility.
Correct.
Is there a way to use those plans for maybe a future expansion option, a module one, module two concept?
Absolutely. I think, I think the first thing to do is, as proposed, is to review the plans as a base, as a base guide and a base document. You're correct, that was going to be a shared facility, so obviously, this would be a matter of paring that facility down. Again, highly recommend the 6.93 acres. I'm a big advocate of this project, as you're well aware. The idea was to actually build the shelter and actually house your large animals at the north end of the property, and build some structures down there as well. Very, very, very ideal for the purposes of a project like this, and allows that parcel and that plot actually allows for expansion in the future as well. So I think, again, going back to what CAO alt was stating, using those plans as a base doc, and then reviewing it as to the actual needs for the next, really, I would look at 10 years and then revisit this every five years thereafter, you know, do we need to expand? How are we looking at? I say 10 years for a facility. Really, we want to look at farther out than that, but I would still revisit this once every few years at the board. How are we doing? Do we need, do we need to look at, what are the things that are going to be considered for structures, infrastructure in the future? Good example that, you know, down the line, do you build a large animal facility at the north end of the property?
Thank you. Any other questions for Mr.?
I think that answers my question. I was, I think it's good to consider plans, sometimes considering can be interpreted as paying somebody back or consideration for. So if that's the use of the term, I'm fine.
Yes, Mr. Stoffer.
You know, we're discussing CEQA and potential impacts with possibly the original set of plans being overdone, more infrastructure there and costs than we may move forward on. That potentially would be scaled back to impact if we, if we lessened it. So the, you know, it may be easier for us to declare a negative declaration in the future, if that's the case, possibly.
I don't want to speak out of turn, I'm certainly no expert, but the fimbful of knowledge I have on CEQA is that if we make a project smaller, it usually requires less mitigation, but it's going to depend on the specifics of the project and depend on what we include in, whether, whether there was large animal contemplation in the design and the infrastructure, whether it would be the same type of infrastructure and footprint that we considered before. So we may well have to go through the process again, depending on the project that we come up with. And frankly, that's, that's why I recommend that it go back to the ad hoc, because that gives us, obviously, that's not a voting member, I mean, a voting part of the board, but we can be a little bit more fluid in the options we look at and keep it coming back to the ad hoc on a regular interval, so then when it comes to the board, we'll be able to tell you whether CEQA is going to be necessary and what we need to do to move forward, and what the programming looks like.
Excellent. Thank you.
Okay, so really, the issue before us to give direction is the location. Was confirmed that the location will be on the county-owned property west of the courthouse, has been agreed to, or does the board have other options they'd like to consider?
More motion, or?
I wouldn't.
Well, I'm just, because this is a study session, I just want to give him, I mean, is there any other options that we want to give?
Why did we discount the other ones?
I'm sorry.
Why did we discount the other locations?
I know Brian's here, he may have some more detail on that in the board actions that were taken. It's not specific about the other locations. This location was described as, quote-unquote, "ideal" in the board package that came forward, and so I can only make assumptions that, in their consideration, this was the top choice.
Just really quickly on that, fiscal feasibility was a big part of that, like the Highway 4 and Balacito Road, there would have been a tremendous amount of earthwork. Connections to water sewer, Pigeonie, et cetera, was going to be higher. Development of the Pigeonie parcel over here would have been purchase of the parcel. So those are, those are some examples. Down below the library, there might have been a, speaking of mitigated declarations and mitigations, you would have been having a facility right below the main library. The positive part, one of the positive parts about this parcel is, first of all, the county owns it. Number two, and I hate to go down this path, but just for the board to consider, are the connections, the wastewater connections. are the connections, the wastewater connections that the county still owns that have not been used by the justice facility. You already own those, so you're not going to be paying additional fees to SASD, in this case. CCWD water, excuse me, CCWD, SASD, and I take that back on CCWD. But SASD, and then our public water is available. We already have power to the site. So really, your infrastructure, basically, infrastructure is already in place. You might have to extend it a little bit, but it's already in place. I know that finally, one of the things we did when, with the old shelter is the parking lot had been made of, well, was just really dirt. We put roadbase down there with the intent that if a new shelter was built, you just put a little more roadbase on it, that becomes your road. So there were some, actually, some thought that went into this on the front end, and those things are actually still in place.
I personally would like to pull the Board on giving direction to continue with the same piece of property.
I don't want to pull the Board. I just want to know if there's no problem, that we all agree to proceed, unless there's any disagreement.
I think, Madam Chair, I think that this is the correct piece of property to do in construction.
Do you?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Mills. Yeah, there's agreement. We're going to go there. The second item we want to talk about is, do we want the CAO and maybe the ad hoc committee to work on financing for this? What has happened? What is available, as Mr. Mills said, or questioned, and Mr. Moss said? There are plans out there? That's a good blueprint to get started? Or do we want to wait till the grand jury hits us up again?
If I might interject, we, after the last Board meeting, there were two projects that were added to the facilities ad hoc as priorities, and animal shelter was one of them. And so we had a facilities ad hoc committee subsequent to that Board meeting, and we've laid out, we being the CAO's office, which includes facilities, where we think the priority should be. And we're really at a transition point where we're moving along in both the DA's building design and some of our other projects, where we could phase into this pretty quickly and start bringing things like programming discussion forward. And until we have programming, which would define the size of the building and the type of structure and things like that, we really can't discuss financing, but that would be a follow-on discussion that we could have after we discuss programming through the facilities ad hoc.
Is there agreement that he proceeds?
Yes.
So, fine, go.
I think also that this might be a discussion for the Dead Advisory Committee to look at too, once we determine what kind of values we're going to deal with. There's all sorts of options, but let's give them a chance to vet it out.
Okay, anything else, Mr. Ross? Okay, anything else from the Board? Nothing else for the good of the order. This meeting is adjourned.
No, I don't want to go home.